Okay, good morning, everyone. I'm Dan Garadnik, Chair of the City Planning Commission and Director of the Department of City Planning. Welcome to today's public meeting, which features two votes on applications in Staten Island and two public hearings for projects located in Brooklyn. First up, the commission will vote on a proposal by the New York City School Construction Authority to facilitate the development of a new fieldhouse for Tottenville High School in Huguenot, Staten Island. We will also vote on an authorization to allow a redesign of Lieutenant Leah Playground in St. George, also in Staten Island. For today's public hearings, we will begin with a mixed-use building located at 3033 Avenue V in Sheep's Head Bay, Brooklyn. If approved, it would include nearly 110 new homes, of which around 30 would be income-restricted, as well as ground-floor retail. The site is only a few blocks from Marine Park and several bus lines. Moving to Williamsburg, the public is welcome to testify on a proposal to convert around 100 subgrade parking spaces in an existing mixed-use building at 197 Berry Street into roughly 300 self-storage units. That's it. With that, Madam Secretary, take it away.
Good morning. This is the City Planning Commission Public Meeting held remotely through the NYC Engage Portal and in-person in the CPC hearing room, 120 Broadway Lower Concourse. Today is Wednesday, May 29, 2024. I will now call the role. Chair Garadnik.
Here.
Vice Chair Knuckles. Commissioner Benjamin.
Present.
Commissioner Surrillo.
Here.
Commissioner Crowell.
Commissioner Doak.
Here.
Commissioner Gold is absent. Commissioner Goodrich.
Commissioner Cimani.
Here.
Commissioner Muddin.
Here.
Commissioner Osorio.
Here.
Commissioner Ramperchad.
Here.
A quorum is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, May 15, 2024.
Great. On the minutes, I make a motion to approve the minutes of May 15, seconded by Commissioner Ramperchad. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed, nay. Minutes are approved.
Scheduling calendar numbers one through five. We have resolutions for adoption scheduling Wednesday, June 12, 2024, for a public hearing to be held in-person on the CPC hearing room, 120 Broadway, and remotely through the NYC Engage portal.
Great, thank you. On the resolutions, I make a motion to approve, seconded by Commissioner Marine. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Okay, resolution is adopted. I'll note, we've also been joined by Commissioner Goodrich.
Thank you. The next part of the calendar is the Report section on page seven. Borough Staten Island, calendar numbers six and seven, R456 Tottenville High School Field House, CD3, calendar number six, N240307ZAR, calendar number seven, N240315ZCR. As a matter of applications for the grant of an authorization and a certification concerning R456 Tottenville High School Field House, for the adoption of calendar numbers six and seven, Chair Garadnik.
Aye.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Surrillo.
Yes, happy to support this project at my high school. I vote yes.
Commissioner Crowell.
Yes.
Commissioner Doak.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Cimani.
Yes.
Commissioner Muddin.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramperchad.
Yes.
Calendar numbers six and seven have been adopted. Borough Staten Island supplemental calendar number one. Lieutenant Leah Playground, Block 21, Lot 1, CD1, N240308ZAR. As a matter of an application for the grant of an authorization concerning Lieutenant Leah Playground, Block 21, Lot 1, for the adoption of supplemental calendar number one, Chair Garadnik.
Aye.
Commissioner Benjamin.
Aye.
Commissioner Surrillo.
Yes.
Commissioner Crowell.
Yes.
Commissioner Doak.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodrich.
Yes.
Commissioner Cimani.
Yes.
Commissioner Muddin.
Yes.
Commissioner Osorio.
Yes.
Commissioner Ramperchad.
Yes.
Supplemental calendar number one has been adopted. The next part of the calendar is the Public Hearing section on page eight.
Great, and we're going to ask members of the public to limit their remarks to three minutes, as is our custom. And Madam Secretary, I'll ask you to call the first public hearing.
Borough Brooklyn, calendar numbers eight and nine, 3033 Avenue V rezoning, CD15, calendar number eight, C240131ZMK, calendar number nine, N240132ZRK. Public hearing, as a matter of applications for a zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning 3033 Avenue V rezoning.
Great. Great, and we have Robert Palermo, Neil Weisbart, and Max Stember Young. And whenever you're ready, you have three minutes. Welcome.
Hi, morning. Thank you, Chair Garadnik. Commissioners Neil Weisbart, on behalf of Ford Coil Properties, the owner of 3033 Avenue The summary of land use actions are as follows. An amendment to zoning map 29A, changing the existing R4 Residence District, underlying Lot 36 on tax block 7367, to an R7D Residence District within a C2-4 commercial overlay. This will also include an amendment to Appendix F, making the project area as a mandatory inclusionary housing area. The site is on the north side of Avenue V between Ford and Coil Streets. It's a 20,000-square-foot lot. It has three frontages, two on Wide Street, Coil and Avenue V, and also a frontage on Ford Street. Currently, the existing site conditions are comprised of a one-story building with 11 commercial establishments. The proposal is to rezone the area to an R7D slash C2-4 commercial overlay. The area to the east of us is a proposed rezoning that is not before your commission yet, but just so the commission has some context here, that area is seeking to be rezoned to an R7X, R7A, and an R6A portions. Also, on the block north of the project area, the area is recently rezoned to an R6A, or for an R6A as well. To the east are the Nostran Houses, which are comprised of six- and seven-story buildings. We believe the proposed R7D is appropriate in this area. The proposal is a nine-story building, mixed-use building, containing 97,000 square feet of residential floor area, 14,000 square feet of commercial floor area. The building will contain 109 apartments, 37 studios, 43 one-bedroom, 25 two-bedroom, four-three bedrooms, and under option one of the mandatory inclusionary housing, 27 of the units will be affordable. Also, at the request of Brooklyn Community Board 15, they wanted a parking space for each dwelling unit, so it's proposed to have 109 attended parking spaces on two sub-seller levels. It's important to note that adjacent to the R4, within 25 feet of the R4, the height of the building may not exceed 55 feet. And one thing I wanted to note as well was that Brooklyn Community Board 15 approved this application 27 to 2. Notices were sent, and there was no opposition. And also, the Brooklyn Borough President recommended favorable approval with certain conditions. These are just some other renderings of the building. From perspective from Coil Street. The area is served by bus lines, which have connections to the Q line as well. The...oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, that's it. I'm sure we're going to have some questions for you, but since I know you're going to get one on this, why don't you go ahead and talk about the flood hazard and how that plays out?
Thank you. So I attended review session yesterday, and I understand that there is a concern about the two sub-seller levels. However, there is a 12-foot cellar right now, and there's never been any flooding. There's no sump pumps. There's no records of underground streams in the area. The area is in a minimal flood hazard under the FEMA map and under the ZOLA map. Most of the area is outside 0.2% floodplain, but there is a small area that is within that. The architect who was on the line has dealt with many buildings in this area, and in the case that there is any flooding during construction, what they do, and what they've done in other projects closer to the water than this project, is clobber off thousand-square-foot areas, de-water, and then build a flood-proof foundation.
Great, thank you. There may be some follow-ups on that. Let me just pose a couple of questions to you, and then I'll go to my colleagues. First is, you noted what you believe to be the appropriateness of the R7D on the site, and you flashed to what was going across the street and the street. Just connect those dots a little bit more for us. I happen to agree, but I also would like to just have clarity here as to why you think this zoning designation makes sense in this context.
So the fact that there are two...the site is located on two wide streets, we think is appropriate. And under the Coil Street rezoning that was done to the north a few years ago, the commission noted that the area along Avenue V would be appropriate for an R7 district, and we took that guidance. We worked with Brooklyn Community Board 15 before we even filed this application. They were supportive of the bulk of the building and the height of the building. And then the fact that there's also this proposed rezoning to the east of us that seeks even higher density in the R7X, we believe that the R7D is appropriate for the current as-built and as well as this future rezoning.
There's some existing ground-floor retail on the site, and you're proposing about 13,000 square feet of ground-floor commercial. Is that correct?
14,000, yes.
14,000. So how does the 14,000 as proposed compare to the square footage that exists today?
So besides some of the area will be given to residential lobby, the rest will be commercial. The tenants will be given the...the existing tenants will be given the option to occupy the building. They'll be given the first chance to take the new space. I've spoken with ownership, the rents will remain the same except for based on inflation, even though there'll be a brand-new building. There's no expectation that the rents will be significantly raised, and the goal is to retain as many of existing tenants as possible.
Great, thank you. And now, just a quick public service announcement. There are some parallels here to what you're proposing, to some of the things that we are proposing as part of the City of Yes for Housing Opportunity proposal, a citywide text amendment, recognizing that there would be here some amount of residential above a commercial corridor, a commercial overlay. That is a good place for residential, and certainly something that we're proposing to do in lower-density neighborhoods around the city, even at a more modest level, at you know, up to three to five stories of residential. Where here, you're proposing something even more significant, which is totally appropriate here. What we're proposing as part of the Town Center proposal and housing opportunity is more modest and certainly would work. I also want to note that you are proposing 109 parking spaces where 50% is required for the market rate and 15 for the income-restricted, and you're going above the mandatory minimum, which of course you would be allowed to do under our proposal for housing opportunity. Even if we eliminated that mandatory minimum, you would continue to have the ability to do what you are proposing here. Is that a fair statement, as you understand it?
Yes.
And would it have changed the way you approached the issue if we had eliminated the mandatory minimum here?
So the parking, the 109 spaces, is solely due to Brooklyn Community Board 15's request to have a space for each dwelling unit. Under the current zoning, approximately 45 spaces would be required, and obviously, ownership would rather not build to sub-seller levels. So we're in a bit of a quandary because Brooklyn Borough President wants the required amount, and the community board wants one for each dwelling unit. So as we proceed through the process with Councilmember Narcisse, we'll get her take on it and proceed accordingly.
Great. And most importantly, you and other applicants in the future, even if we were to eliminate that mandatory minimum, will continue to have the ability to have this conversation with the community, Borough President, Councilmember, et cetera. Okay, let me see what questions are there for you. Commissioner Osorio.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for the presentation. I wanted to build on the discussion around parking, but first, I wanted to follow up a little bit on the conditions that were stated by the Borough President, and maybe starting with the second one first. I was just wondering if, what is your response to the condition to consult with Nostran Houses Tenants Association?
We are willing to...I've reached out to the Borough President. I couldn't find contact information online, but I've requested that, and once we have their contact information, we'll reach out to the association.
Gotcha. So in other words, you're willing to meet that condition?
The existing tenants have the first choice, and if there are additional spaces that become vacant, then discussions with the association will guide that.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. And then regarding the second question, so you already started answering my question, or the condition is stated by the Borough President, but I just wanted to know if, you know, when reading the community board's statement, it sounds like it's very clear, as you said, you know, they're setting the condition for the 109 parking spots, but they're also sort of like referencing the amount of affordable housing units? And so I'm wondering if, given sort of like what you've discussed, is a situation where you're hearing, you're pulling, you're being pulled in two different directions, whether converting or increasing the amount of affordable housing units in a scenario where you can save the costs associated with the sub-seller levels, which, you know, I have a question in terms of the flooding and your statement in terms of the vulnerability to inundation, but I'm wondering if, within the scope, you would be willing to increase the amount of units if you didn't have to build as much parking, given the requirements?
The Borough President has the same question. We spoke to ownership, and yes, they would be willing to increase the amount of affordable housing.
You would be willing to do that?
If there was a savings on the parking, yes.
Okay, cool. Thank you. That answers my question. Now, I just wanted to comment on your presentation, even though I agree that the current regulatory inundation maps only include a small portion of the 500-year floodplain. We know that those maps are very much out of date, although that's the regulatory document that we need to abide with. I just wanted to highlight for you that all of the projected flooding data sets, including what was projected at the time for 2020, include an incremental amount of flooding coming in and will be affecting the property, which means that I wouldn't undermine the importance of really, really making sure that you're safeguarding the property against potential flooding. I also just wanted to highlight how the DEP stormwater flooding maps show that, even though the property itself seems to be okay, the projections will also increase the amount of stormwater inundation along Avenue V, which is sort of like beyond sort of like your responsibility here, but noting that this is an area that may require substantial infrastructure improvements to keep it fully dry.
Just it's important to note that during Sandy, there was no flooding in the cellar as well, but the architect is aware of this and can answer questions if you had about the flood remediation, but they've done work in this area, numerous buildings, I'm told even closer to the water, and so they do make sure that they provide all protections.
Thank you. I appreciate your response and knowing additional information, you have the point, but I guess just sort of like encouraging you to explore opportunities to really try to avoid the sub-seller construction if and less needed.
Will do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't see any further questions for you. We appreciate it. Going to do a quick call for members of the public interested in testifying on this item. Okay, seeing none. I'll close the hearing on calendar number eight, non-3033 Avenue V rezoning. And Madam Secretary, would you tee up the next one for us, please?
Borough Brooklyn, calendar number 10, 197 Berry Street rezoning, CD1, C240072ZMK, public hearing, and the matter of an application for a zoning map amendment concerning 197 Berry Street rezoning.
Yes, and as we call up the applicant team here, Abraham Brennan and Adam Tubman, I'm going to turn to the vice chairman for a quick comment.
Mr. Chairman, if it pleases you, I'd like affirmative votes recorded for items six and seven.
Yes, we will record those. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Great, recorded. Gentlemen, welcome. You have 10 minutes.
Your mic.
Here it comes.
So the red light means something. Okay. Good morning. Adam Taubman from Kramer Levin. I'm Land Use Counsel to the applicants, Ben Singh 250 LLC, and I'm joined by the principal at Anthony Javi Bennett. We're here to seek a rezoning to reduce the accessory parking requirement applicable to the property located at 197 Berry Street in Brooklyn. This is an aerial view of the project area, an existing building that occupies the southern portion of the block bounded by Berry Street, North Third Street, Bedford Avenue, and North Fourth Street. This is the area map from our application. That same development site or project area is outlined in red. The surrounding area consists mostly of residential and mixed residential and commercial buildings. Today, the site is located in a special mixed-use district designated as MX8, with a paired M12R6B district. The permitted uses of that district cover the whole range of residential, community facility, commercial, and manufacturing. The maximum FAR is two. And pertinent to our application, the accessory parking requirement is half a space for every one dwelling unit in the case of residential uses, and for retail, one space for every 300 square feet of floor area. The property is well situated among a number of public transportation options, including the L train, which runs a few blocks to the north, multiple bus lines, and the New York City Ferry to the west. This is a view of the property from the corner of Berry Street and North Third Street. It is improved with an existing building, three to five stories in height and three cellar levels. That building was constructed in 2010. It contains a mix of uses today. There are residential uses totaling 84 dwelling units, three retail establishments, a health club that was originally approved pursuant to a BSA special permit, and the accessory parking garage that's the subject of this application. In this image, you can sort of sneak a peek of the entrance behind that tree on Berry Street. That parking garage is for 142 required spaces today. 100 of those required spaces are accessory to the commercial uses in the building, and the remaining 42 are accessory to the residential uses in the building. The other thing that this image shows in terms of existing conditions is that Berry Street is part of DOT's Open Streets program. So vehicular access to Berry Street where the parking garage entrance is located is restricted to local access and deliveries. More recently, back in March, DOT implemented a number of changes to that Open Streets program. So along Berry Street here, there's now two-way bicycle traffic, and along certain stretches of Berry Street, particularly to the north, vehicular traffic is swapped in the opposite direction. As we'll get to in a moment, we expect that that will further impact access to the garage going forward. The parking garage is accessed from Berry Street and located primarily below grade at the second sub-seller level. It's an attended garage, so cars are dropped off with an attendant within an approximately 80-foot-by-26-foot entry area on the ground floor, which you can see in these photographs here. The rear of that entry area contains two-car elevators that attendants use to bring cars down to and back up from the sub-seller parking level. The garage totals approximately 20,000 gross square feet, consisting of 2,000 gross square feet in this entrance area on the ground floor, and 26,000 square feet in the below-grade level. These are images of the below-grade portion of the garage where cars are parked, and what we hope it conveys is that the garage is significantly underutilized today. It's 142 required spaces, as I mentioned a moment ago. Of those 142 spaces, only approximately 80 spaces are used at any given time. And that number is actually inflated because the garage charges rates that are well below market rates in the surrounding area. The garage operates consistently at a loss, but some price has to be charged just to get customers through the door. We've identified a few reasons for this. One of those reasons is that the zoning regulations in effect today don't reflect the observation that the city has made in a number of other contexts, which is that development sites located in transit-rich areas do not require as much parking as other areas. But there are also factors specific to this location. The chief one is that a number of residents have told Javi over the years that they don't like to use the garage because the operation of the car elevators results in significant delays in retrieving cars. And we also believe that the implementation of the Open Streets program, including the changes that were made back in March, will only further reduce parking demand for this garage. So our proposal is to rezone the southern half of the block from the existing M12R6B district to an M14R6B district. You'll see that a very small portion of the development site will remain outside the rezoned area, but under the split-lot regulations of the zoning resolution, the proposed zoning will apply to the entire site. These are comparison tables showing the regulations under the existing zoning, the regulations under the proposed zoning. The use and bulk regulations will not be changed. There are no proposed alterations or enlargements to the building, other than in connection with the garage. The intended result, the only result, is that the total parking requirement will be reduced from 142 spaces to 42 spaces. And the reason for that is that under the M14 district regulations, there is no required parking for retail uses. As part of the application, our environmental consultant, Philip Abiven Associates, conducted a study of the parking supply within the vicinity of the property. They found a surplus of both on-street and off-street parking spaces, and concluded more generally that a surplus would remain with the proposed parking reduction. The rezoning would allow an approximately 18,000 gross square foot portion of the existing garage to be converted to a self-storage facility. The self-storage facility would be designed and operated for short-term use by local residents and small businesses with small closet-like units. And from what we've heard from residents and businesses in the surrounding area, this serves a growing community need. The building's entrance area would be separated into two smaller entry areas with separate elevators dedicated to the garage and storage facility. That brings us to the end of the presentation. I'd just like to note briefly that we are pleased that this application has gained the support of the community board and the Borough President, as well as the condo board for this building, retail uses located in the building, and a number of community groups, such as the North Brooklyn Chamber of Commerce and Open Spaces. And with that, we'd be happy to take any questions.
Great, thank you very much. I'm going to start with Commissioner Benjamin.
Just one quick question. What was the utilization like before the Open Streets program? I know how difficult it is to get onto that street, even to try and get into the Whole Foods garage next door. So before the Open Streets, was the utilization higher?
Well, I believe utilization was slightly higher. It was still depressed, you know, relative to what's expected in this area, what other garages see because of that entrance condition. Javi started investigating the possibility of seeking some sort of parking reduction before the Open Streets program went into effect, because even at that time, this garage was operating at a loss because of low utilization.
And is the rate the same or lower than the Whole Foods garage next door?
I believe the Whole Foods next door is free parking, but...
Well, free parking if you shop...in the beginning, they used to require you to show a receipt.
Yep.
And, you know, when you go in, it says that you only get an hour and a half there, but I've never known them to check for receipts or to make your residents who park there.
Yeah, I can answer.
Yes.
Go ahead, Doc. Thank you, everybody. I think that we know the ownership just because they have the site next to us, and they basically gave up because the cost to have an attendance check and everything was a lot more than just any revenue or whatever Whole Foods demanded. It is free, and most people just park there. You can't park there overnight, though, but they don't check anymore. It's just not worth it. uh, but they don't check anymore, it's just not worth it, uh, to, to have somebody stay there.
So it's conceivable that for the residents in your building who, the 80 or the 40 leftover people who may not get a space, they could in fact avail themselves of some opportunity to park next door at, at Whole Foods.
You know, I, uh, speaking not as a planner, but just, you know, as a person, I suppose, I, I think that sort of parking might have some appeal to people visiting local businesses, but because there's no overnight parking option, we don't see that residents of this building would look to that, that facility as a suitable alternative.
I, I want to add something about that, uh, we, we only have, currently you have two...
Can you speak right into that microphone, please?
Um, I apologize, currently we only have two residents out of the 84 units that actually
Park.
Uh, they get a discount. Um, traditionally, over the last two and a half years, we never had more than six, uh, people ever from the building parking. And it's not because, uh, they have, um, it's not because of the rate or anything, it's just they just either don't have a car at all, or, um, if they have a car, they, they park on the street.
Okay.
We are at the cheapest rate anywhere within a few blocks, so it's not a rate issue.
And do you have parking, or would you be willing to consider having some parking for bicycles and cargo bikes?
Um, there is parking, eh, nobody ever inquire, you can park a bicycle there, it, I think it's like $30 or something a month, but the building has, uh, a backyard parking that is also underutilized, uh, they have plenty of spaces in both courtyards, so nobody really asks for it, and nobody parks, uh, the bike for 30.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Osorio?
Thank you Chair, thanks for the presentation, and, and, and thank you so much for the materials, I think that throughout the, our discussions on the, on this project have been very straightforward, given the thoroughness of everything that has been submitted, so thank you for that. There's just one thing that has been pending from, uh, even our initial review, which is, in the materials, eh, you state that there could be up to five cars at a time, sort of queuing, and I know that based on the, just the last conversation, the response that you gave Commissioner Benjamin, it sounds like that's very rare, but assuming that, I don't know, eh, the L train has to go off or something, and we have higher traffic, I was wondering if you can walk us a little bit through, you know, what type of pedestrian safety, eh, eh, measurements are you taking to make sure that if there are up to five cars in there, those who are going to be using the storage, which I guess will have a separate elevator, are actually, um, will not be conflicting with cars that are coming in, can you walk us through that?
Sure, thank you Commissioner, I, I do recall that question from the earlier review session, we did come prepared this time, but I am going to start with image that you've seen before, which is the proposed, uh, design of the storage area, I'm sorry, the entrance area, where there would be both the storage use and garage use below grade. So you can see that there are two designated zones, so to speak, for people accessing the storage facility, and people dropping off cars or picking up cars, uh, in connection with the garage. Those two areas will each have their own designated elevator, and they will be separated by bollards to ensure safety of those pedestrians as cars pull in and out of the facility. You know, this is a, an illustrative design, Avi has been consulting with a leading traffic and parking engineer as he moves forward with this process to arrive at a final design, but what you see here is based on some case studies, and move forward to some images. It so happens that there are a number of self-storage facilities in the city that don't necessarily have an adjacent or associated garage, but do have a condition where both pedestrians and vehicles access the same loading or unloading area at the same time. And fairly consistently, they use these types of bollards that you see here to separate the pedestrian zone and the vehicular zone. You might see in the right image, there's a yellow railing at the rear, which is also used to provide safe separation. This is a storage facility of a competing storage company, and you'll see that again, they've used a bollard, a striped area, and a railing to provide safe separation. So, based on these precedents, we're quite confident that as the process moves forward, there will be a more specific design than what you've seen in that illustrative image, that will, you know, conform to standards for safe operations for these types of facilities.
Thank you, that's very useful, and I would appreciate if you can share any additional information in terms of the specific design as, as you have, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, I don't see further questions for you all, so thank you for your presence here today, and, um, I'm going to call for members of the public interested in, in this item, uh, and seeing none, I will close the hearing, uh, at 197 Berry Street, calendar number 10, Madam Secretary, is there further business before the commission today?
No Chair Grodnik, there is no other business before the commission, but I do have some public information to share. For those of you who are unable to or did not wish to testify, you can submit written testimony online by selecting this hearing on the upcoming meetings pages at NYC Engage portal, through DCP's website, or by mailing your comments to City Planning Commission, Calendar Information Office, 120 Broadway, 31st floor, New York, New York, 10271.
Great, thank you very much. Commissioners, thank you very much for your time, uh, and energies this week, um, and with that, we are adjourned.
The time is 10:33 AM.